Welcome to the first meeting of Daly City's first Small Business Commission. I would like to officially call this meeting to order. My name is Brandon Phillips, Economic Development Specialist, and I am pleased to be acting as staff liaison in connection with this commission. We have a pretty full agenda this evening, and I want to be respectful of everybody's time. But before we get started with the pledge of the flag, I just want to thank our mayor, vice mayor, council members and staff for all of their support in approving this commission and all of their work in appointing the commissioners that will be taking their oaths this evening. So before I move on, are there any initial comments that anyone would like to make? Hearing none, and there will be opportunities to speak later on in the meeting. Let's move on to the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to the next item, roll call. For our commissioners, this is just a kind of taking of attendance that will occur at all meetings. When I call your name, please let us know that you are present. Mr. Esperitu.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Concordia. I see you, Ms. Concordia.
Present. Present.
Fantastic. Mr. Hill.
Present.
Ms. Manio.
Here.
Ms. Carson. Thank you. All commissioners are present for this meeting. Moving on to the next item, administration of oath of office. For this item, I would like to open the floor to Mayor Manalo. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. This is a really exciting time. I'm glad to see all of the commissioners here and seeing this come to fruition. Before any business happens, we'll do the oath of office. And in that regard, everyone would be doing it at the same time, and you can repeat after me. Okay? So I state your name.
I'm Frances Espirito.
I'm Maria Carson.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution
That I will support, defend, and the Constitution.
Of the United States
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. So at this time, I see some of my colleagues here. I afford them the opportunity to speak to all of you as this is an exciting time to see the Small Business Commission start today. And so I look upon the screen and see if there's anyone that'd like to make any comments to our brand-new commissioners here on the Small Business Commission. Councilmember Vittaventura, please.
First, I want to thank you, Mayor Manalo, for really championing this issue of creating your head in this committee. This is a necessary, even more necessary now than ever before when we first had discussed conceptualizing this commission for our city. You folks have a lot of work to do. We are really counting on you to help with the ideas and the suggestions on how we can make our small businesses better, more efficient, more productive, gaining more revenue, and working for the people of our community. It's a big, huge task. There's a lot of challenges ahead. But we have identified you folks as the one that we really believe can make this happen. I don't really mean to put a lot of pressure on you, but in a way I really do because we are at a critical point, and without your help, we're not going to be able to really be successful. So the only thing I would additionally add is I really would encourage you to be bold and creative and innovative in your suggestions and your ideas. This is not the time to play safe. This is not the time to just agree and, you know, not make any debate or really, this is the time to get it up there and step up. I'm really looking forward to seeing what you guys are going to do. I do have my own ideas, but I think it really comes from you folks. We have innovative, thoughtful, and workable solutions. Very much for your service. We look forward to working with you all together. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor. Thank you. First of all, let me say congratulations to all of you coming for and being committed to serving your community is admirable. Each one of you are extraordinary. I'm very humbled, look forward to meeting those that I don't know as well. But I'm very thankful that the ones that I do know already, I know that you bring forth so many great things personally and with your business knowledge as well. So I want to thank you for accepting to come onto this. So I humbly thank you on the behalf of the community and to echo everyone else now more than ever. And I've seen all of you pitch in with the community on several levels already throughout the years and know that it's a deep heart in Daly City. So you represent a heartbeat for our businesses, and I look forward to, again, working with you. And you're in great hands with Brandon Phillips and Tatum Mothershead and welcoming you to the City of Daly City family. And you guys are always family anyway prior to this. And so really looking forward to it. And I apologize, I will not be able to speak for the meeting. I'm on a CCAG meeting currently and got excused, so I purposely could be here because I wanted to see all of you because you don't get to see the faces, especially during COVID. And I love you all and totally with big gratitude and a big heart. And I've seen your work, and I know that you're dedicated. And we are blessed to have you in our city. So thank you very much, and thank you for your service to the community and moving forward. Thank you very much, and to your families as well. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Are there anyone else that'd like to speak?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to say a few words, if I may.
Please.
Okay, great. Thank you. I have to concur with the sentiments of my colleagues here on the City Council. The creation of this committee has long been in the works for quite some time. And we knew that this is something that is needed and needed to get off the ground quickly. And I am so happy that it's happening tonight. On the commission, we've heard from our community, folks through
Mr. Sylvester. You're breaking up. We can't hear you.
I think he's frozen right now. Oh, there you go.
Okay, okay, I'm on another Wi-Fi. How's that? Any better?
Better.
Okay, great. Thank you. In a nutshell, I would like to concur with my colleagues. This Small Business Commission was something we wanted here in Daly City. On the council, we have heard complaints from some of our businesses and those who want to start a business that some of the hurdles that they had to jump through. And believe me, I think the Small Business Commission is going to provide a mechanism and a pathway to help. And that is what we're looking for from you. As Councilmember Digi Avani made mention, you are in good hands with our staff, Ms. Mothershead and Brandon Phillips. And many times I've said to the city manager, where did you find this guy? So Brandon's going to be a great resource, and if you don't ask, you don't get. I would hope that every single one of you learn about each other, know what each person brings to the table, and believe me, the power that this commission is going to exhibit is based upon the strength of the each individual. You cannot do it by yourself. So I would like to say congratulations. I'm so happy, and I'm waiting. I know most of you. I've seen most of you. And Mr. Hill, I'm looking for good things from you. And thank you for all being here, and let's do this. Let's make Daly City great. Thank you so much. Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. Vice Mayor, Dr. Smokball, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say congratulations to all of you. I just want to first start off, like, this business community, Small Business Community Commission is truly historical in the making. And it's like what my colleague, Orey Boletura, just said. It's, we're working in unprecedented times. So this is a way to finally find a way to engage the small business community and to really think bold, right? There's ways of bolstering small business communities, but what are there some other ways, some creative ways? Maybe having ideas of a social enterprise, getting youth to understand financial literacy. Because those are some of the systemic and issues that affect many communities of color to have that financial literacy to understand and navigate society, you know, to have that entrepreneur ambition. I think we talk about, you know, being able to create networks, right? So we have the Small Business Community. We have organizations on the ground. What are ways we can, like, fill in the gap? There's a void there. And this is an opportunity and a time to build that network and create something that is special in Daly City. And I see this as a Small Business Community. And usually when we think of business, it's always like, oh, it's business as usual. Let's change that narrative. Let's change that narrative of not seeing business as usual, but business as a way to capture, to engage, to sustain and maintain a greatness about who we are in Daly City in terms of bringing revenue to Daly City, to encourage and to inspire people in your position. So I just want to say thank you again, Paloma. Thank you for, you know, staying around and, you know, writing this out. And I know, you know, born and raised here, you know, this is like your home. And for a lot of you as well, too. So I know everybody's going to take a little bit of, a lot of pride because we want this to be all successful. So just like with my fellow council, we're all in the same boat, you know, and we all got to, you know, navigate the tough seas, the rough seas during this time. And we can't get out unless we all help each other. So thank you again.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Mayor Manalo, may I just add one final thing?
Yes, please.
I just want to reiterate what Dr. Rod just, partially what he said because that's of real importance to me as well, which is when you make your decisions and you take things into consideration, I sure hope you look at the effects of systemic racism and the social dynamic in the decisions that you make. You know, even though you're going to be making a lot of decisions that are, you know, financial, business-minded, but I sure hope you don't forget the real, who you're touching and the people you're affecting. And so Dr. Rod, I think, really raised an important issue that I think we all do believe in, mine especially. So, yeah, I mean, Black Lives Matter and Brown Lives Matter, and we need to be constantly thinking about them and not forget that it's not just about money, but also equality for everybody. So thank you very much, and thank you, Dr. Rod, for raising that point.
Madam Mayor, just one more comment, just like piggybacking on all of our colleagues because we're all excited. I've already seen the shift that you guys were able to do during the COVID. And I want to commend you on it because it was a tough shift in each of your individual businesses, I'm sure. But I know, Ms. Cruz, how you had to do the contact lists where you guys delivered and made sure that that was very safe, not just for your clients, but for, you know, your family and the customer. And you were still able to continue. That's quite a shift. Ms. Manio, Paloma, Charles, everybody on here, Frances, all of you. Because I know it's not been easy, but you did it, and you're going to continue to do it. And people need help in knowing how to do that as well. I've heard from some businesses, it's not easy, and we're in Daly City. But we can thrive, and we can make our Daly City, because we take so much pride in it, we can really thrive here and continue that shift because it's going to be a complete shift. We already know that. And you guys have what it takes to be the guiding light, and I have full faith in that. So thank you very much, and thank you, Madam Mayor, again.
Thank you, Councilmember Digi Avani. And if there's, let's see, I think if there's any other comments, I I see a raised hand. Oh, Councilmember Sylvester, did you want to say something?
Yeah, very quick, since
And then I think, Councilmember Vittaventura, you have another comment?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, you have a raised hand, so no worries. Thank you.
Applause.
Oh, that's applause. Okay, Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, you know, I always detract a little bit and give my feelings on certain things. And I want to say, our city attorney, Rose Zimmerman, I like your background. I like that way it's blurred out there and it's so clear. Nice, very nice. Anyway, for those of you on the commission who don't know, and Commissioner, I'm sorry, Councilmember Digi Avani kind of alluded to it for Ms. Cruz. For those of you who don't know on the commission, Charles Hill used to be in the banking industry.
Yep.
And he was responsible for providing business loans to everyone and anyone. However, he has seen firsthand how, I mean, you speak of systemic racism, where those people of color were unable to get the loans that other people obtained. And matter of fact, there was a write-up on him in Business Times. So for more information, hopefully he'll share that with you. But he does bring something to the table and that goes directly in line to take in consideration that times and the awareness that is currently with us needs to be adhered to and understood as you folks go about your daily roles as commissioners on the Small Business Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. There's no other comments. I'd like to say some comments to the new commissioners. I think, you know, each and every one of you were chosen for a reason and from your background, expertise, and being able to contribute to our city. It was initially an idea before the pandemic, and now the pandemic is here in front of us. And so it's nonetheless really around how do we see our businesses survive, right, in that way? And also not lose the sight of the potential that the City of Daly City has. And so, you know, it was talked about today around being bold, looking at innovative ways, ensuring that we are supporting our communities of color as Daly City is extremely diverse, and we all know that. And also just, yeah, working together to find those ideas and bringing forth others that you may hear about or know about and bring forth their stories or their struggles so that that can be at the table. But I'm hopeful, excited, you know, Mr. Hill, Mrs. Concordia, Ms. Manio, Ms. Cruz, you know, this is going to be exciting for us to see, and we're here to support you. You are, as mentioned, in great hands with staff, with Director Mothershead, with Mr. Phillips, and also the city manager, Mal B., and city attorney Zimmerman and Mr. Stolti. I think we all want to see this thrive, and with you in it, you guys will be able, and ladies will be able, to bring this forth. So as 2021 moves ahead, and it's going to be Lunar New Year tomorrow, so very fitting, as the new year moves ahead. I know that you all will do wonderful work and very excited for that come into fruition. So thank you, and also, of course, Mr. Esperitu, with your work. All of you, I can see the synergies and what you can all bring to the table around your experiences, and it's really exciting from your backgrounds. And we'll be here to support each and every one of you. Congratulations. I know you have a long, Mr. Phillips said you have a long agenda, so it won't be too long, and we'll be here.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, councilmembers, for all of your wonderful comments, all of your support in forming this commission and all of your work in appointing the commissioners that just took their oaths of office. And of course, a big congratulations to all of our recently appointed commissioners. Moving on to the next item, welcomes and introductions. So for this item, I would request that each commissioner provide a short introduction of who they are, mentioning what business they own in Daly City, their professional background, expertise, and any other items that they see fit so that those who do not know you, particularly your fellow commissioners, can get a sense of who they will be working with on this commission and what particular perspectives you will be bringing to the table. So going by last name alphabetically, Commissioner Carson, would you like to kick us off, please?
Sure. Hi, everybody. My name is Maria Carson. I own Air Lollipops in Daly City. Before I decided to open Air Lollipops, I used to work at Party City for 10 years. I was actually a manager, and I was having problem with getting a raise. I was actually, like, training all the guy manager there. But they were paying me the lowest. And I wrote letters, and I talked to the corporate, and I just decided I'll quit and open up my own. So that's pretty much my story, and 11 years later, I'm running Air Lollipops. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carson. Commissioner Concordia, please go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for everything, for having me be part of this commission. It's an honor. I started Papa Lowdown Agency, which is a PR, public relations agency, 11 years ago. And similar to Maria, I was working in PR. Originally, my background started in the fashion and retail industry. I went to the Fashion Institute of Design and Merchandising in San Francisco. And then I went to another business fashion school in New York. And after I graduated from New York, I was motivated by the music industry and entertainment industry and hip-hop, and came back to San Francisco Daly City and explored that path. And when I was in that role in a digital distribution company, I faced a lot of sexual harassment and just a lot of negativity. And, you know, I was really trying to promote people in the community, artists in the community that I was a part of, and was facing a lot of, you know, difficulties with that. They were Filipino artists, and that really motivated me to want to start my own business, my own agency, so I can support artists and business owners and creatives that, you know, align with my values, that I believed in, that I was passionate about. And so that happened, yeah, 11 years ago. And from there, I've worked with restaurants. One of my longest-running clients is Seven Mile House. I'm sure you guys are familiar with Seven Mile. And I work with Chef Reyna now, who is in Daly City, working with Love Burn Chicken in South San Francisco. If you guys love hot chicken sandwiches, they are one of the best in the bay. I also work with Somas Filipinas and Cultivate Labs, a lot of arts nonprofit organizations, Cool Arts. Who else have I worked with? So Somarts, Somcan. So a lot of organizations in San Francisco that are rooted in social justice, that are rooted in in arts activism. So, you know, arts, culture, and community is really where Papa Lowdown Agency, that's our passion. I also have a mentorship program, an apprenticeship program. So I really believe in mentoring other young people that are interested in PR. 90% of PR professionals are white, and I'd like to shift that and encourage more people of color to take on the PR role in the community. So I think that's it. I'm also a parent. I have four children. Well, can I tell you about myself? Yeah, and I'm just excited to support and help small businesses. I feel like I personally have grown in my role as a business owner the past few years through working with a business coach, with a prosperity coach. If, you know, that's something that's kind of new, but mindset. So I'm excited, like, helping support business owners with shifting their mindset around prosperity and wealth, and like, what does that look like? Because a lot of people of color, business owners, people of color have, you know, right, issues around wealth and money, and like, do I deserve that? So I think that's something I'm excited to bring to the table of how can we help business owners shift their mindset around being empowered and being wealthy and in a responsible way as well. So thank you again for having me.
How much? Commissioner Esperitu?
Hi, good evening, fellow commissioners. Yeah, I'm with Philippine News. Been with that company for the past 25 years. Prior to that, I also have an experience in restaurant. I used to own Clam House of San Mateo in 25th Avenue. And I was also past president of Phil M. San Mateo Chamber. At that time, also, we're trying to recruit and to improve business, give them the tools, resources, from account, from their books, from, you know, small business. And, and then prior to that, too, I was also a member of the South San Francisco Chamber, because our office used to be there for the past 10 years before moving to Daly City. And I think I can bring to the table, you know, regarding probably the advertising, on the advertising side of small business, and think outside the box. So that's it. And thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hill, please go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. Hopefully you can hear me. And it's definitely an honor. I just want to thank the City Council, Councilman Sylvester, for recommending you, the mayor, and, and my fellow cohorts on this inaugural and special commission. I, I'm honored and I'm thankful for the opportunity. And as I'm sure my other cohorts can appreciate, you know, when you're a business person, adding that extra responsibility, you have to think two or three times about it, right? It's not like we don't have enough to do. But, you know, prior to, well, let me just quickly. I, I came to Daly City about six, in 2014, and I took over the business. And my mentor actually started the, is top of the hill cleaning laundromat. And I think Councilman Sylvester mentioned that I came out, I was in banking, or I was in finance. I was in the mortgage business, real estate finance, did commercial, residential. But I had spent a career in banking with Wells Fargo in a, in a prior life. And I came over in 2014 to help my mentor save his business. He had been in it for 25 years. He had had some health issues, which I didn't, I didn't realize the extent at the time. But I came to help him save it. And he was unable to save it. And so some other individuals had, had, you know, basically been following his, his kind of demise, the business demise and the public records and, and had approached him and had made a, basically, he was backed into a corner and they gave him, they, they were trying to buy it for dirt cheap, which was at least 20 cents on the dollar. And so when I found out about it, I stepped in and said, let me see if I can help you sell it to someone that would pay you more. His health was declining and, and we couldn't, we didn't find the right buyer at the right time. There were pressure deadlines. And so I made the decision to buy it, to make sure that at least he got some value. My intention was not to stay in and run the laundromat, because I had done other things. But, you know, as the good Lord would have, is you never know what opportunities waiting for you. And Daly City has welcomed me and, and I've learned a lot about the, the community. But I also got a chance to, in addition to honing my operational skills, just really figure out some of the challenges that when I was on the banking side, I would look at small businesses and businesses and say, well, why don't you have your documentation together? Or, you know, or how can I help you get lending or loans? And institutions were very difficult to, to lend money to them. And now being on this side, you know, was, it was like I was getting a MBA in, in real-life entrepreneurship for a business owner. And, and, you know, some of the things I discovered was that it's not easy. And there are a lot of challenges that impact the small business person. We're truly the chief cook and bottle washer. And, and you lack a lot of resources. But a lot of good businesses make it happen anyway, like other councils and other cohorts have. And so, you know, I was a teacher in the past. I taught, you know, I taught at Community College in Oakland. And it's always been a passion of mine. And when I was on the lending side, I loved educating and working with small businesses. And, and so when this opportunity came up, I thought it as an opportunity to apply what I've learned, but also my years of education experience and some of my contacts and relationships to, to impact in a positive way, small businesses in this community. I think, I agree. The times are, the times were challenging before COVID for small businesses. They just got accentuated, right? But I've been amazed to the ingenuity that I've seen in our community and just through the country of how businesses have had to pivot, right? And so I'm very hopeful that, you know, with resources, that it is, and that with the right resources, I think committee is, is, in the City of Daly City wants to provide, that, you know, we can have a positive impact and help those that are struggling to maintain, bring in, bring to the table those that want to create an idea, see an opportunity. And I'm looking forward to working with, you know, I was looking at the backgrounds of the cohorts assembled, and I see so many talented people. And I'm excited. I'm just like, well, I'm just looking, I'm looking forward to learning and contributing. And, and at the end of the day, feeling like we've given our best and we've served the community. And, and if I've done that, you know, you know, I think I can, you know, be at peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. Commissioner Manio, the floor is yours.
Mr. Phipps, good evening, fellow commissioners, council and city staff. Thank you for your vote of confidence. My name is Maybel Manio. I'm a commercial real estate broker. And I literally help open doors for small businesses to operate, sustain, and thrive. I have a vast network of vetted professionals. I'm a product of WISE Women's Initiative for Self Empowerment, Renaissance, and many others that I work with. This is my third business. I've, I've won, I've fallen, I failed many times, over and over. And I always bounce back better and more knowledgeable about how to run a successful business. I have a myriad of experience in education, nonprofit management, social work, hospital finance. I've been in Daly City since the 1990s. I originally hail from the Central Coast, Santa Barbara and Ventura Counties. I have one teenage daughter and currently sit as your president of the Jefferson Elementary School Board. And I just want to say that we've seen the greatest peril in almost 100 years shatter small businesses, along with hospitality and major retail. This pandemic has fractured our politics and challenged every one of us to confront our own fragility. Our challenges, as our council members have said, will require everyone's best efforts. And as we reset the economy, we, as a cohort, as a commission, must govern with compassion and an understanding of people's needs. 2020 was the year that reminded us of our frailty and also brought forth our greatest strength, humanity. I'm thankful to our city council and management for creating this commission and not waiting to hold this meeting. And I'm hopeful for renewed economic creativity to transform our economy into a better, healthier, smarter, more inclusive, and sustainable one where the best of all our constituents are realized. I look forward to serving with you all. Thank you.
Commissioner Manio, thank you very much. And thank you all for your introductions. Based on everything I just heard, I just want to express my personal excitement in having the opportunity to work with all of you. Each of you bring unique perspectives and expertise to this commission. And this all bodes very well for the future of this commission and the good work that we can do in collaboration with one another.
Mr. Phipps, you have to excuse me. I have to go back to my regional meeting. So I apologize to everyone here, but I'm on CCAG. So thank you, everybody. I don't want to interrupt, and I have to go back to my CCAG.
A pleasure to have you join us, Councilmember Di Giovanni. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, my colleagues and commissioners and staff. Thank you so much. Thank you.
So before moving on to the next item, are there any comments that anyone would like to make? Okay, hearing none. Moving on to the next item, presentations. To start off this item, I would like to open the floor to Madam City Attorney to provide us with the Brown Act overview. Ms. Zimmerman, the floor is yours. And would you like me to share your presentation?
If you could. Thank you, Brandon.
You got it.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, commissioners, and congratulations again for being part of this newly formed commission, Small Business Commission. We are all very, very excited. And I know staff, as well as the council, has waited a very long time to have you part of this commission. So again, thank you for being a part of that. Tonight, I am going to give you a very, hopefully, brief and general overview of the Open Meetings Law, which is the Brown Act. It doesn't sound any more exciting than the way I just presented it. But essentially, as a small business commission as a body, you are held to a level of accountability now and being accountable to members of the public. That being said, as commissioners, you are all subject to the Open Meetings Law. And I guess, Brandon, you're going to have to control it for me, right? That if I say the next slide or?
That should be it.
Okay, can you go to the next slide?
You got it.
Okay. So what is the Brown Act? The Brown Act, the council members are very well aware of it, is a body of law that is, essential purpose is to promote transparency and public participation in local government. Its overall intent is a body such as yours. Small Business Commission is a local agency that's open to the public and all members of the public are permitted to attend all the meetings of the legislative body and also have access to all of the communications and documents that you have before you make a decision in the items that you will be looking at. I wanted to point out, as you know, I mean, we're all virtual and we're Zoom. So essentially, with the pandemic, the rules of the Brown Act have essentially less loosened to accommodate safety amongst our constituents as well as the public. So while members of the public are allowed, and they were definitely invited to be part of this Zoom, because this is a regular meeting, it is definitely lessened as we move towards this pandemic. And we are, we did hear that that essentially would be kind of the case moving forward, is the virtual meetings would be an access to the public meetings. Okay, let's move the next slide. Who is subject to the Brown Act? Essentially, the bodies, boards, city council supervisors, school boards, and bodies that are created by the city council, such as commissions, standing committees, task force, and appointed, and appointed boards. As the Small Business Commission, you now operate as a body. You don't operate as individuals. While you may bring to the table individual thoughts and debates, and we definitely welcome that. The decisions that you make are the decisions of the majority of the Small Business Commission, just like the decisions that are made for the city council. Next slide. What is subject to the Brown Act? So, and again, you know, as I go through this, at any time, if any of the commissioners have a question, please feel free. This is, this is a very informal presentation in general. So if there are any questions, and to some of you, this might be very familiar if you've already served on commissions. What is subject to the Brown Act? So essentially, it's a meeting. And a meeting is any time the majority of the members come together to hear, discuss, and/or deliberate any items that is a subject matter for the Small Business Commission. Next slide. What does that mean? So that means basically a quorum. And a quorum with a body of five is three or more of members of the commission. So when we talk about a meeting, it doesn't necessarily mean we all have to be gathered here through Zoom or through the council chambers or at City Hall. It is essentially when three or more members come together to discuss items. And when that happens, essentially, you're subject to the Brown Act, which means that this, that meeting needs to be noticed and open to members of the public. Next slide. Here are a couple of examples. I thought I'd just kind of point out, again, discussions and receipt of information before a decision is made is a meeting. Informal gatherings, such as lunches or social gatherings, to the extent that three or more members of the commissioners come together and they do discuss items that come before the Small Business Commission, that's a meeting. One other, you know, given sort of the wide array of technology and social media platforms that we have today, another way of having a meeting is through this form of communication. So for instance, if there is an item that's going to be discussed before the city council, before the Small Business Commission, and three or more members of the commission email each other wanting to discuss it or form some kind of concurrence, that's considered a meeting. Posting, social media discussions, there's all kinds that I'm not aware of. Direct messaging, I mean, we've all opened the door to the traditional form of city council meetings that now can be subject to a meeting. One type of a meeting that not many are aware of is what we call serial meetings. A serial meeting is when, for instance, one individual commissioner speaks to another commissioner. And while that's not, you know, a quorum, there's only two of you, but you start to discuss an item and then you bring in another commissioner. That may not necessarily be together gathering, but you're having a series of discussions. That can be a meeting. And generally, that is frowned upon under the Brown Act. They, it's very difficult to have members of the public present when we have serial meetings. Okay, next slide. Exceptions to the meeting. So when I, when I talk about gathering together, we really don't want to discourage that you, now that you're members of the commission, that you can't get together. So conferences and gatherings, which are open to the public, where you don't discuss items of business that you will be voting on, is an exception. You want to attend another council meeting, another board meeting, all five members, and we definitely welcome that. That is not a meeting as well, purely social or ceremonial occasions. However, if members get together, even if they do discuss it, let's say in a parking lot and start to discuss items of business, that can be looked upon as a meeting. So we, we wanted to just kind of point out, because ideally, you would have gatherings. You might have meetings where you might have workshops that you get together where you don't really vote on anything. But perhaps Brandon would have a meeting where you would talk about items and not necessarily vote on it. That would be considered a meeting and we would definitely notice it. Okay. So what happens when you have a meeting? I'm sure you've seen, saw the agenda this evening, as well as you probably have seen city council attend us. When you have a regular meeting, such as this evening is a regular meeting, we have to post an agenda, which is 72 hours before the meeting. We can have special meetings. Special meetings are those meetings that, obviously, they're not regular meetings. They, they can be a date that the commissioners come together and they want to discuss items that might be, in addition to the meeting they're having. That's a special meeting and that would require 24-hour notice. The other type of meeting, which is most likely, it happens where that the city council level is an emergency meeting. And those are in dire need when you have an emergency. And all that is required under the Brown Act is that you have one hour notice and to the media. And that's pretty much it. And that's in very, very extreme circumstances. Okay. When you have these agenda meetings and notices, what is required is that they're physically posted. Again, when we bring it back together, we talk about the intent of having it accessible to the public. Physical posting, the minimum requirement is we do post it in front of City Hall. And given COVID and the lessening of requirements, pretty much, we post it online, virtually on our website, so that others can see it. And there are instances that people don't have access to it. So if people want to have a standing request for these notices, we can have a standing request as well. And we basically can provide the agendas to anybody who requests it. Okay. Basic rules for agenda Basic rules for agenda posting. When we talk about what's going to be discussed before the Small Business Commission, the agenda requirement is that you provide a general description of each of those items you're going to be discussing at the meeting. Generally speaking, items that are not on the agenda cannot be discussed. However, there are some exceptions to that. If you want to have some clarifications, if you want to have a report from staff, brief announcements about your activities, or request some staff to have additional information as well as scheduling. So at your meetings in general, you might have a general section where you want to discuss items that you maybe attended an event or you did something that you would like to maybe see in a future agenda. Those are items that can be discussed on your agenda that do not need to be posted. Public access. I mentioned before, everything is open into the public when you're talking about items before the Small Business Commission. The public is entitled to the agenda packets and documents that you have. All of the backup documents associated with your agenda, as well as presentation items, unless they're confidential, is also accessible to the public. And again, I had mentioned, to the extent that the public cannot have access to these agenda items, they can request through the city clerk's office that they have a standing order to be provided, these agenda materials. Okay, next one. One of the things we talked about is that you definitely want to talk about anything that's presented on the agenda. So after an agenda is posted, an item can only be added that you want to vote on, on very specific narrow circumstances. So an emergency, or there's some item that came up that you need to discuss that was after the agenda posting. And then you can discuss a item that's continued from the previous, the previous agenda item. And in those instances, you can vote to add those to the agenda. Next one. The members of the public, again, this is a little bit, a little more flexible because of Zoom and virtual meetings. Members of the public are allowed to record or film your meetings. Most of our meetings are recorded and have access to. I believe that we do have it through our, I don't know if Small Business Commission meetings are necessarily recorded, but if they are, then members of the public can request to have that recording. And it must be made available for inspection for 30 days. Okay. The right to comment, again, because of the virtual, we do allow for abilities for members of the public to make comments through our virtual meetings. For regular meetings, any member of the public may speak to an agenda item before you make your decision. And we have it in all of our regular meetings, a public comment section. And that is, that means that any members of the public, it's kind of like the open mic part of the agenda, any members of the public can speak on any subject that the Small Business Commission would consider. In this instance, you know, there's been some times where you don't, while members of the public have the right to speak, they don't necessarily have the right to disrupt your meetings. So I believe in the next meeting, you'll be voting and reorganizing for your chair. The chair controls the meeting. And that's very important, especially when you have, at some point, we'll have live meetings where people are present and they could be highly charged. You want to have control because we do want to have the business commission conduct business and be able to deliberate and vote on certain issues. Okay. And that's what I mean with the conduct of the meeting. The chair is responsible for assuring order and conduct and decorum in the meeting. The city has adopted what we call Robert's Rules of Order, which is the old parliamentarian rules and guidelines for decorum. It's not the law, but it does give us a little bit of order in how we follow it. Okay. As a body, the action items that'll be presented before you, I'm sure you've seen them at city council meetings, is, will be voted on by motion. This is the old Robert's Rules of Order that you see in many of these meetings. And basically, it's by motion, by second, and the votes will be recorded by roll call votes or you can do a voice vote, which is made basically all in favor, aye, or nay. Okay, next. That's pretty much it in terms of the roles that you play under the Brown Act. Again, when you are a commission and you are a commission of accountability as well as open to the public, there are penalties and remedies. Very, very extreme circumstances, they're, you're personally liable if you knowingly and willfully violate a Brown Act. But it's very rare. I think in most instances, you might not be aware and the body has a chance to correct things. To the extent that items were voted on, for instance, discussed outside of a noticed meeting, then the body has a chance to cure it and essentially renotice it and allow the members of the public to be present at these meetings. And if there are legal actions, any interested member of the public can file suit on the, on a Brown Act. Cost and attorney's fees are usually awarded. It's very, very rare. I think most of the time, our, our commissions, as well as our council, are very aware of the Brown Act and don't willfully try to violate. And again, if there are any questions, we're here to support you in any way to discuss anything that you might feel less comfortable with or you need to ask questions about. The next slide is really just resources. You can go. And essentially, these are resources, I think Brandon might have provided copies of this PowerPoint. The city attorney's office is always available to our commissioners to ask any questions you may have. We're here to support. Brandon is going to be the staff liaison. So to the extent that you have questions on the agenda or anything that you may need to know about Brown Act violations, conflicts of interest, I know that some of those questions arise. Definitely use us as a resource. We're here, we're very excited to hear what you have to say and your questions. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Rose, for your presentation. Before moving on to the next item, are there any questions or comments from any of our commissioners or attendees? Okay, hearing none. Moving on to the next item. Role and function of the Small Business Commission. Let me just pull up that presentation. Okay, so for this item, I have put together a short presentation on the role and the function of the Small Business Commission. Please let me know if any of you have issue in seeing the presentation. So the city council, excuse me, created the Small Business Commission to better serve and to establish a connection with our city's small business community. On this commission, our commissioners serve in an advisory capacity with the pleasure of the council. The ordinance approved by the council that formed the commission, ordinance number 1435, outlines specific duties of appointed commissioners. Before going into the specifics here, generally, our commissioners are tasked with advising the city council in fostering, promoting, and retaining small businesses in the city. So getting more specific, this general duty can be applied in three primary ways, which I will discuss. Those three ways being inside out, also known as top-down, outside-in, also known as bottom-up, and through the creation of a nexus or acting as a liaison. So regarding the first item, inside-out, duties within this category flow from the city council and city staff through the Small Business Commission and into our small business community. Examples of specific duties that will take this form include fostering programs to promote and celebrate the small business community and providing local business with economic, demographic, and land use-related analytics to eliminate information gaps in the small business community. So in these cases, city council and city staff will develop items that they would like the Small Business Commission to be involved whether it be related to providing comment on city-initiated programs that involve small businesses or amplifying the city's voice on items we would like our small business community to be aware of. Regarding outside-in, duties within this category flow from the small business community through the Small Business Commission to our city council and city staff. Examples of specific duties that will take this form include creating a collaborative environment for local businesses to voice their desires, concerns, and hopes in connection with business ownership or management and encouraging strategies to support the functioning of small businesses. So in these cases, our small business commissioners will use their position in the city's small business community to listen to small business owners in the city, understand what challenges they face, and amplify their voice so that city council and staff can have a greater awareness of the strengths and weak points in our small business ecosystem. Potential business-supporting strategies may be developed and discussed at the Small Business Commission based on what is observed in the small business community. Lastly, regarding the creation of a nexus, duties in this category flow in both directions, generating a flow of information that is not unidirectional between the small business community, Small Business Commission, and city council and staff. Examples of specific duties that will take this form include advising city council on all matters affecting the small business community and advising and assisting other city boards and commissions as it pertains to small businesses, establishing a liaison between the city, local businesses, and small business groups, as well as supporting the formation of new businesses. So in these cases, our small business commissioners will take information from both the city council and city staff in addition to the small business community to create a constant flow of information so that dynamic discussions can be had and so all perspectives are included in discussions or small business-supporting initiatives. So this slide just contains a summary of the roles that were mentioned on previous slides in addition to some questions or discussion. Based on the questions shown here and understanding that we do have a full agenda and we don't expect, you know, completely full answers at this time and reflection is probably required to provide those full answers, would any of our commissioners like to comment or respond? Okay, hearing none. Moving on to the next item, future meeting schedule. So the commission will hold six regularly scheduled meetings in each calendar year, occurring on the second Thursday of every other month, including the months of February, April, June, August, October, and December. Regular meetings will start at 7:00 PM. So due to ongoing concerns related to social distancing in line with county and state health orders, meetings will be held virtual until further notice. As Ms. Zimmerman eloquently explained in her previous presentation, all of our meetings shall be open to the public and governed by the Brown Act. Based on the meeting schedule shown on this slide, the next regularly scheduled meeting is set for April 8th at 7:00 PM. And we look forward to seeing you there. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you guys this evening. So before we move on to the next item, are there any comments from any of our attendees? Okay, hearing none. Moving on to the next item, announcements and communications. So since this is our first meeting, I think this section will be fairly brief, but there are a couple of items I would like to discuss. Firstly, at the next meeting, as Rose mentioned, commissioners will vote to appoint both chair and a vice chair. With that said, commissioners, please reflect on this in advance of the next meeting and please be ready to discuss and nominate your colleagues to either of those positions if you feel so moved. After those appointments are made, although it has been a pleasure to act as an emcee of sorts in connection with this meeting, the elected chair and vice chair of the commission will assist in moderating future meetings as well as assist in agenda-building efforts in collaboration with our city council and staff. That is all I have as related to announcements and communications. Before I move on to the next item, are there any announcements, communications, comments, or questions from the group?
Brandon, may I interject for just one, for one minute?
Of course, Ms. Malpe. Please go ahead.
Hi, welcome, everyone. My name is Shawna Malpe. I'm the city manager for the city of Daly City. I know some of you by name, but not all of you. And it's just a pleasure to meet everyone. I tried to type in my thoughts and then it got ahead of me. And so just disregard my chat because it doesn't, there's some grammatical issues with my typing really quick. But I just want to say that I echo the mayor and the vice mayor and the city council in welcoming you, welcoming you to this new commission. I believe that when Mayor Manalo envisioned this, it was absolutely a needed commission, but now more than ever with COVID and with the, the explosion of, you know, this demand for a voice for social equity and social justice matters. Now more than ever, this, this commission will be really needed in Daly City. And so my office, there's Leilani and Stephen. Leilani is the assistant to the city manager and Stephen is the assistant city manager. And we work really closely with Brandon and Tatum. And so we will be of service to this commission and we thank you so much for your dedication and your interest in this endeavor. So welcome.
Thank you very much, Ms. Malpe. Any other items before moving on? Brandon, okay, here. Oh, please, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just wondering, and hopefully this is not inconsistent with the Brown Act, but is there a way for you to disseminate a contact list of contacts, email, and sorts, professional email of the committee members?
Unless Madam City Attorney has any issue, I don't see a problem with that.
Okay.
There's no problem with that.
Yes, we can work to develop that and distribute. Thank you.
Rose, can I chime in?
Sure.
I know city council obtains a list of all commissioners. And I'm just wondering, would this be appropriate here? Because you know, the goal of Daly City is to get all the commissioners to know each other. I don't know if it has to be redacted or, I don't know, your thoughts on that?
Are you talking about the list that we have, current list?
Yes.
Of all the commissioners?
Yes.
Unless the commissioners themselves have a, you know, a problem with distributing any information, I don't, I don't see a problem with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester, Commissioner Hill, Madam City Attorney. I will move on to the next item, public comment. So I'm just going to do a quick double check to ensure that I haven't received anything since the meeting started. And I have not seen anything. I have not received any public comments in connection with this meeting. So unless there are final comments, I will move to adjourn.
Oh, yes, I'd like to make a final comment if I may. Brandon, you did an excellent job this evening in making everyone feel comfortable. As I sit back and I, and I watch and I listen, I, I'll say that the commissioners, you commissioners are very, very quiet. Believe me, that will change. Actually, Brandon will be your advisor at your meetings and your folks are going to run your own meeting. And just as made mention, the chair will take control. Don't worry, it's okay because everybody's going to get an agenda. Don't worry, it's okay, because everybody's going to get an agenda. And don't be afraid to speak up, and you're going to go right down the list on the agenda like Brandon did. So, I'm amazed how quiet you folks were, but I understand it's kind of new, but I know you guys and gals will perk up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. Any other final comments?
Hello? Oh, go ahead. Commissioner Concordia, please.
I, I don't know if now is the right time, but I am excited about thinking of like, how can we honor our legacy businesses in Daly City? You know, off top, I think of Philan Barbecue as, as one of those, and I think it'd be exciting and much needed to like honor legacy businesses. So I don't know if we can get a list of like what longstanding businesses are, are in Daly City that we can take a look at and create some sort of, you know, certificate, they can hang on their walls, and, and just honor them for serving the community. I'm sure there's, there's several that have been around for decades. So that's something I just wanted to, something I've been thinking about that I'd like to share with everyone now.
Thank you, Commissioner Concordia. We can certainly, we can certainly go back and forth on that and do some additional research at the staff level.
Can I add a comment, you know, consistent with, and I'm going to have a hard time pronouncing her name, excuse me, Commissioner Concordia? The thing that I was thinking about was it would be helpful to, to get an idea of the number of small businesses that exist currently in Daly City, and a profile, or at least an ideal of what, what industries, what verticals they exist in. So when we start meeting and start formulating ideas, we can at least kind of understand at least a base level of the people that we're going to be serving. And maybe some of us will have some experience with probably some of the challenges or understanding of those industries.
Commissioner Hill, just briefly to respond, we have done some work internally to understand what our small business ecosystem looks like, and just looking forward, that will definitely be an item for discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
I also have a question, Mr. Phipps, if that's okay? How, just, it's housekeeping. How do, who, who creates the agenda, and how do we get an item on the agenda?
Ms. Zimmerman, would you like to take lead on that?
Sure. So essentially, your staff liaison is, is, Brandon, I'm assuming, would be creating the agenda. However, if the commissioners, usually, it usually goes through the chair, and because you haven't reorganized yet, it's difficult to kind of discuss what that would look like. And so, it's usually through the chair, and then the chair can discuss with the staff. But then however, there is a sort of a general discussion area where you can discuss items that you would like to consider on the agenda as well, and Brandon would be able to take those down and, and develop the agenda. So the agenda is essentially developed through, by Brandon, in terms of the logistics. But if there are items that you would like to discuss, you can go through the chair, and then usually the chair would be the person to communicate with Brandon.
Can I add on to that? In my experience, as Madam City Attorney alluded to, if city council has something, we would direct it to the mayor. And, you know, this is not to say that your idea is a good one or a bad one. Every idea is very, very important. We also have to bear in mind the time issues, and sometimes you may have an item that may require some additional work, and, but still, it's important to you. So that does not say it will never be heard. It may be heard, you know, one or two meetings down the line, but it will not be forgotten. So I think it's very, very important, and from what I'm hearing so far, I think that creative juices is now starting to come out. So, that's good. I'm glad to hear that, but that's a good question. Thank you. I hope that helped a little bit as well.
You know, as a councilperson and a member of the committee, I would be interested in, I know you had, I think one of the council persons mentioned that you guys have gotten a lot of feedback from various businesses over the years, some complaints. But I'd be interested in seeing if there's, it's been sort of a common thread amongst some of the major issues that businesses have been expressing to city council as to what their concerns are in the Daly City community.
Well, if I can comment on that, it was actually one complaint that I received, but at the same time, if I do get any complaints, and I'm sure my colleagues will concur with me, I'm going to say, I think we need to refer that to the Small Business Commission. You guys are our first line of defense with the community, and we take to heart your recommendations and your thoughts because you folks are the experts. So, of course, and I'm sure Brandon would concur if he hears of anything, and something that requires a decision to be made, or maybe changes, that's going to come from you folks in an advisory capacity to the city council.
Thank you.
I have a comment, if I may. This is Ray Buena Ventura. So, Mr. Phipps, I really liked your presentation, especially the in-and-out, out-and-in, and liaison diagram that you put up there. That was really helpful. So what I will say to the commissioners is that the, the issues that you're going to be deciding upon, they're going to either come to you by, by Brandon and the city council, or by the community, or I, I just know you have some dying issues in your head, in your mind, that you want to start to talk about and tackle. And so, I think you're going to have a lot of opportunity to do that, and, because I'm sure you're probably wondering, you know, how do I address this, or how do I put that on the agenda, or how do I get that done, or this is what I want to do? And that's great. So keep that fresh in your mind, and bring it up whenever you can. But the model that you've been presented with, I think is going to work well, because you're coming, you're going to be coming at it from all different angles, and, but the one that I'm most especially is interested in is what's coming from you, and what you want to deal with, because you're, you're the heart of the community, and you clearly know what's going on out there. And so, I can't wait to see it, and be a witness and a receptor to your, your input, because we, you've got some really great things to do. So, get to work.
This is Shawna again. I just want to, Mayor Manalo, forgive me if I am taking your thunder, but there are a couple of events that are coming up that may be helpful for the commission to at least review on the YouTube, our YouTube channel at a later date, or participate live. On March 15th, we are having a town hall from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, where we'll be reviewing the community priorities that were identified last year through a polling that we did. And we are soliciting input from the community about, about the, the next budget process. And so, that would be March 15th from 6:00 to 8:00. I think it's a good opportunity to see, you know, the inner workings of the, of Daly City government, and then if you have a voice that you want to bring to that meeting, we'd be happy to hear that as well. I mean, then the second meeting, of course, this is all virtual, and I can't wait to meet you all in person, but another important meeting that we do, the council does every year, led by the mayor, is called the State of the City, and that's on March 22nd. And I believe that will be right before the regular meeting, so 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And I just think that if you, I mean, none of us have a lot of free time, but just to try to get a better grip of the inner workings of Daly City government, that might be, if you can join one or two of those, or look at the link, it might be helpful. And again, we just are super appreciative of your time and your interest, and can't wait to get to know you and hear about your contributions.
Thank you, City Manager Malpe. Any other final comments?
Yes, thank you, City Manager Malpe, for providing those dates to our new commissioners. I just want to say thank you. We know that this is voluntary of your time, and, you know, you're not going to get paid for this, but I know that you guys are all passionate and to be giving back, and we are definitely looking forward to what lies ahead from each and every one of you. And so thankful to my colleagues for the support of creating a Small Business Commission. I want to thank my fellow council members, and also city manager and her staff to bring this forth, and also now seeing how it's all working together with bringing back our economic development specialists. I just see how there's good things ahead, and great things ahead for Daly City to come with each and every one of you, and your contributions and your time. So, thank you for sharing your talent with us as we move forward.
Thank you, Mayor Manalo. Any other final comments? Okay, hearing none. Thank you all for being here on this rainy Thursday evening. Thank you, mayor, vice mayor, and city council members, and city manager, for all of your thoughtful comments, and of course, a big congratulations to our recently-appointed small business commissioners. I really look forward to working with all of you moving forward to benefit our small business community. This meeting is adjourned, and have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.